Good evening, everyone, those that are online and in person. Before we begin tonight, I want to acknowledge the significance of today's date. Twenty-three years ago, our nation faced a tragedy of September eleventh, two thousand and one. We remember those who lost, we remember those who were lost, the bravery of our first responders and the strength of our communities. To honor this day, we are fortunate to have members of our high school band here to perform the National Anthem. Following the performance, please join me in a moment of silence as we reflect on the value of our unity, service, and resilience that continues to inspire and guide our school district and community. Please join me in the moments of silence. Thank you very much. Thank you to the band. Fabulous, fabulous. Gather my thoughts here. I also want us to remember not just those poor souls that lost their lives on this horrible, horrible day, but all those wonderful men and women who have fought for us after September eleventh. So keep those families in your thoughts and prayers, please. I'll go on and enter into a public hearing, and I'm going to turn this over to Cheryl.
Thank you. In your packet, there's a memo outlining the CMGC process and why we like to go this method as an alternative procurement method. It is one we have used for our seismic grants many times over and very successfully. The CMGC method hires the contractor, that we bring them on early in the process, in the design and development process, so they can help us do value engineering, make sure everything fits in the plans from the engineer's design to when they put it together. It is competitive. We invite all contractors to submit a proposal. The price is fixed. We have a grant, about two and a half million dollars. About 2.2 of that is usually set aside for the construction portion. And so we tell contractors, this is what we have. You need to do it for this price. And so it is competitive. They give us a proposal, how lending their skills, their experience, their experience with CMGC, and experience doing seismic rehabilitations. And I'll answer any questions if anybody has any.
I'm rattled right now. I apologize. Comments, questions from the audience? Okay, nobody online? Okay, we will close the hearing. Hearing is closed. We will now move into our regular board meeting, and at this time, I would ask Professor Leonie lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I welcome you to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Well, I'd like to welcome you to our regular business meeting of the directors of the Roseburg Public School. We do have a couple housekeeping rules. And first of all, I'm sure Jared will say something, but our chairman is on a very well-deserved vacation. She's online, and I'm sure she's having a great time with her family and grandkids. And I feel like this is the first time I've ever had a meeting, so better get it together here. We do have some housekeeping rules. If you have a cell phone, we would ask that you would silence that for us, please. We will have public participation tonight, so if anybody from the public that would like to speak that isn't already on the agenda, there's a back table back there, there's a card that you will need to fill out to speak. And we like to remind folks that you get two minutes to speak to the board at this public meeting, so you might want to put your thoughts together. You can, there's all kinds of ways of contacting the school board. We have email addresses that if you need to communicate with us, you can send us an email that way. Do we have anybody from the news media? We'd like to recognize them and give them a chance to plug their organization they're with, anybody online or in person? Okay, yes, not. So we will move on to principal report, and as he makes his way up, we would like to thank Russ for hosting us tonight. Took a tour prior and got to see the new safety features of the school. They did a fabulous job, the contractors. And then we got to see the modular that gets to be used this year. Those are really nice. So anyway, thank you for hosting us. Your staff, it's a lot of work, and I do want to thank the central office staff. Also, especially Mr. Hill, Matt Hill, that's hiding behind the monitor there, monitor back there. It takes a lot of work, so thank you.
Yeah, you bet. It's our pleasure to do it, you know, even with the being just the second week of school, it's, you know, it's a quick turnaround, been busy, but it was a pleasure for me to take you around and show you the new vestibule and our new buildings and all the amenities that we have with that. Because it turned out really, really great. I've had a lot of positive comments about it from from staff and our community as well. They're really enjoying that. So we can go on to the next slide, Michelle. Obviously, our strap plan does a lot to drive us. And I'd like to read the center of that. All students will receive the care, support, and instruction needed to graduate from high school with plans for their most successful futures. That's our driving force right there. But my job as a leader of this school is to make sure that my teachers are taken care of, so they can do that job. And I take that role very seriously. And hopefully, they feel support and they get the support to do their jobs in the classroom, so we get our kids to that point. Very important that, but that really drives what we do in our school. If you go to the next slide, our vision for student learning, create a positive, engaging learning environment which promotes a growth mindset, supporting students to feel connected, safe, confident, and challenged. We talked a lot about growth mindset at the beginning of this school. That's not just for our kids. That's for everybody in our school, and I told our staff when we met at the beginning of school, it's for every person on this campus. We have to have that growth mindset. And I talk a lot about getting 1% better every day, and I've been kind of hammering that here at the beginning of the year. And so now staff is coming up and saying, hey, I got 1% better at this today. And I said that to a couple of staff members. I was helping second graders log into Clever and getting onto Epic, which is a computer program, and I'd never done that before. And so I was telling staff, hey, I got 1% better today. You know, I learned how to do that. So it's not just for kids, it's for the adults on campus as well. Next slide is, this is our preliminary data. It's not finalized, and this is the results from the state test. So on our literacy, our ELA, 40% of the kids met benchmark. That's a 3% increase from last year. Students with disabilities were at 20%, which was a 10% increase, which was huge for those kids. Math, 27, we were up 5% in our math scores. Students with disabilities, they were up 8%. Attendance overall, we were at 68%, which was a 5% increase. And our students with disabilities, they increased 12% to 68%. So there's growth. Okay, are the numbers where we want them to be? No. And if we dive deeper into the data and we started breaking down and looking at kids and looking at our other scores, we saw tremendous growth with our kids across the board and last year. And I could tell you some stories, but I won't get into that, but it's, our numbers are growing and they're getting better. And we just need to keep pushing and keep driving. This is what we're going to do to make sure that we get there. Our goals, this is real preliminary, because we haven't even finished our diagnostics, which we want to dive into some of that data. But it will probably land somewhere in between by increasing by 5% across the categories, across our literacy and math. I would like to see our attendance rate increase by 10%, at least 10%, and get above, you know, 75% of our kids being in 90% here of the time. So that's what we're really going to drive, but I got to get with my staff and really dive down and, once we finish our diagnosis and look at those numbers to see where we want to put our goal for next year. So those aren't finalized yet, but they will be. But it is finalized how we're going to get, whatever goal we set, will be, this is the way we're going to do it. Two areas that we're really main focus on, culture is really important to me, and we talk a lot about it, and we work a lot about on our culture. We have two areas of focus that we'll be focused on, and it comes from the 5D framework. The first one is purpose. What are we teaching? Why are we teaching it? Do the students know what they're learning? And then on the student engagement, how are we getting kids engaged in the lessons? How are we getting kids to make sure that every kid in that classroom has access to the information that's being taught? Those will be our focus in both literacy and math. And you can see some ways that we'll do that. We'll do learning walks. I had a great meeting yesterday with Mr. Bantia and Mrs. Endicott from the Teaching and Learning Department on how we're going to do some of those things. So me being a second-year elementary principal, I'm not on my own, okay? I have the help and I have the support, and it was great to sit down and talk with them because I'm not overwhelmed by it. And I know that we can do these things and be very successful at these things, and I really appreciate that support. The goal number three is something that I really wanted to concentrate on this year, was improve our behavior on the buses. Okay, because our behaviors on the buses, it was bad last year, okay? It was just not where I wanted it to be. So at the beginning of the year, I've already met with the bus drivers. We came in, I brought them in, we had a quick meeting with them about this is what our expectations are as a school, this is what we're doing to communicate home, this is, you know, we're all on the same team. A bus is not a bus. A bus is a mobile classroom. And that's the way we're kind of taking that approach. And that's what we want to do, and that's what we'll keep on working on to get our numbers up. And we have the greatest staff to get that done, for sure. Next slide. I think that's it. I will, the last thing that I will say is I talked to the staff a lot about happiness and joy, because it's two completely different things. Happiness is result-based, okay? I won the race. I'm happy. I get an A on a test. I'm happy, but that feeling goes away. I want my staff and our kids here on this campus to experience joy every day. Because joy is constant. Joy is having those connections, having those relationships, and building all those things together. And that's what we strive here at Fullerton to do every single day is to experience that joy. And it's, and I thank you for allowing me to do the work that I get to do every day at this school, because it's, and I always say, it's a blessing. It really is. So I appreciate it. Any questions?
Couple of comments. Thank you. I know it's a little rough being the first.
Yeah.
We knew you could nail it. And I hope you have a lot of joy and happiness this year, so we can see you next year. And I know that most, a lot of principals are here and maybe a couple are online. This report that he gave tonight is not only given to the directors, but it's given to superintendents. It's a little bit different. And this format that I use, you probably know this is going to be the same format, I believe, that you're all going to use. So we look forward, we really do enjoy the tours and coming out to the buildings. I mean, you just get the feeling, and I think that's important. So anyway, thank you so much. Okay, this is another fun time of the night. We have student leadership reports. So, guys, like to introduce yourselves?
Um, we're the co-presidents of the student body at the high school. I'm Celia Ekman, and then
I'm Annan Colberg.
Yeah. Oh, it's been a while. I think this is the longest summer we've had. We enjoyed it, but we're both pretty excited to be back on campus. There's a lot of good stuff happening, and I know there's a fun new group of people from exchange students to the freshman class. All in all, we've had a really good start to the school year. This past summer, before school started, we were able to welcome 10 new freshmen to our leadership program, including Olivia from Short Cliff, which was fun. And we also welcomed, or she kind of welcomed us, our new advisor, Mrs. Bartlett. Aside from working on team building this summer, we helped with registration. We did a campus tour with four exchange students, worked on school beautification, and then a staff welcome lunch. And then the first week of the school year, Annan and I got to speak at class assemblies last week, get a good look at everyone's new haircuts. That was nice. We also shared some goals and plans with our leadership class has this year, and then we got to do that alongside our grade-level reps for each class. Last week, we had the first tailgate of the year. We got some help from Coca-Cola and then the Young Life Program on campus. I think that was something that we hadn't done in a while, so that was super successful. And then bright and early the next morning, everyone was back on campus for senior sunrise at 6:15. That was super cool. There's a lot of parent support with that one. And then this Friday, there will be another tailgate, and then Annan probably, and some other seniors in our class will help lead the bum squad as our football team plays against Churchill. And then I guess the last thing is tomorrow, we're holding inner ASV elections in our class for a treasurer, a ninth-grade rep, and a secretary.
And then for sports going on at the high school, we have a girls' soccer played last night against North Medford. They're also playing against Willamette tomorrow night. Meet our bum squad at 6:00 PM to watch them continue their season as they have a home game. Football has a home opener last Friday against Gresham. This week, they are playing Churchill also at home. We will be raising money for the VA and honoring veterans with a USA theme. Our boys' soccer team played at home against North Medford and won 4-1. Shout out to Alex Villanueva, Aaron Familio, and Ian Landeros for scoring the winning goals on Tuesday, and they are also playing away at Willamette 6:00 PM on Thursday. Our cross-country team is also racing this Saturday at the Oregon City Cross Country Classic. Last night, we also had a volleyball game, and our girls won.
And then looking at our school, our link crew team welcomed over 350 new members of the Class 2028 last Tuesday. There's a lot of them, but they're all really fun. And then club meetings have started on campus this week from an astral meeting with free pizza, a key club clothing closet workday today, and there's a robotics meeting this Friday. You guys can all attend at 5:30 in Mr. Mears' room, if you're interested. And then students are also preparing to sign up for college credits through UCC. List of free credits is long, ever-growing, I think, from calculus to art 101. The students on our campus, we have so many options when it comes to earning credits before college.
We're looking forward to all the exciting activities that come along with the start of the school year, from getting to know new freshmen and students on campus, the start of a great season of bumming. The energy within our student body is growing exponentially.
Yeah, thank you.
Report. Nice report, and I wanted to say the tailgate thing was a lot of fun. And, but your principal needs a little bit of work on his cheerleading. I didn't see him do any flips at all. And anyway, work with him on that. He cried. Okay, Jared, a review of agenda?
Thank you very much. WIS management will talk about forums for flips for employees at the football games. A great report. It's good to see everybody again. Want to welcome remotely from Pennsylvania, actually, Chair Minor. Thank you again for being here. It's 9:21 in Pennsylvania, and she's here joining us on a vacation with her grandkids. So thank you. Great, great to have you here. Second week of school, we'll talk a little bit in my report about some great things happening. Great report tonight. Really appreciate that. Annan Sylvia, great report. So the agenda is, there have not been any additions or subtractions with that. And good to see everybody here tonight on our second week of school with kids. Thank you.
Anybody online for public participation? Uh, no. Okay, we have no one chanted? Okay, Jared, you want to, or who was going to bring Jeff up?
Yeah, we do have Jeff coming up for a sec. Hope the board and community can welcome Jeff Eichenbush. Welcome, Jeff. We're real grateful to have Jeff join us. Jeff has a long history in our community of public service and serving law enforcement, being involved both as an SRO, a PIO, and he's got deep, deep knowledge. And Ed left for Glide, and we're really, really excited to have hired Jeff. And I just want to make sure that Jeff could say a couple of words tonight. So Jeff, I'll turn it over to you.
Today is kind of bittersweet for me because it's 9/11. I've been in law enforcement for 28 years. We're the Roseburg Police Department and a lot of roles from more resource officer to the faculty, to the forecourt, to the PIO. And it's been an incredibly rewarding career, but I'm ready to move on to this next opportunity, and I'm really excited you guys have taken that jump. And we didn't need the opportunity to do this for you. I got up early today on graveyard shift, so I got up early, watched my daughter play volleyball, rushed over here. I'm here, then I'm going to go take a nap, and I will my final shift tonight. So I'll bring my five shifts tonight to the police department, and then I'll see you guys all on Monday morning. So yeah, I'm sure the next couple of weeks, couple of months are going to be a whirlwind. I'm going to apologize if I don't remember all your names right away, but once I see a couple of times, I'll get that down. And if you have any questions, please call me. My mind's always open. Texts, call, email, whatever, and I'm available for anybody with a need.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Any board members have anything, all that? Wanted to make sure you met Jeff, our new district safety coordinator. So, okay, Jess, thank you very much.
Okay, we're going to move into action items and discussion items. The first thing is consent agenda.
I'll motion to approve the consent agenda.
So we have a motion. Need a second?
I'll stick it.
A second. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Okay, we'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Okay. Oh, she votes. Oh, she has a yes. Okay, I'd like that. Okay, now we're going to move into, we had the hearing, and now we're going to move into the action item on approved, considering the approval of finding supporting an exemption from traditional bidding requirements and use of the GMGC method of procurement for the Roseburg High School low-tech east building seismic renovation. And that's on page 31 if you're packing, if you didn't get a chance to read that. And Cheryl, I want to turn it over to you if you have anything to add.
Hi.
Did you, I'm sorry, I was, did you give a brief? Okay, so everybody understood. Okay, I'm still last week. Apologize. So I would like a motion?
Jim, I'd, oh. I'd move for approval of the alternative method to procure services for a CMGC as outlined in our materials. And I just noticed this is a unique management process for public projects, involves value engineering, and it specifically sets out a not-to-exceed contract amount. And this is a valuable practice for public entities.
I'll second the motion.
Here we have a motion and a second. For this action item, any further questions? How many years have we been using this process?
Eight, nine.
A long time.
Yes.
And it's worked very well.
It has.
Okay. Okay, let's call for the vote. All in favor? Aye. Yes. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, Chelsea. Chelsea's going to give us an update on communications and then the new parents square program update and the 2024-25 updated strap plan.
Hi. So yes, in your packet, you have some highlights about parents square. Can you hear me? Yeah, okay. And I'm excited to talk about it because it's a really fun and easy-to-use platform, but we're rolling out this school year to replace One Call and Remind. It's much more efficient and easier to use. It basically allows schools to easily communicate with parents and for the district to easily communicate with parents and staff district-wide. And basically, all, everyone in our system already automatically has an account. You don't have to sign up to get it, but you do have to register to change preferences and whatnot. So that means that basically everyone will get notifications regardless of whether they've yet to register. And we will be continuing to encourage folks to register throughout the next few weeks. It's a more efficient system. Like I was saying, it actually ended up costing about the same as Remind and One Call combined. And there's potential to save more money when we start rolling out additional features like the secure docs, which we can use to send report cards home electronically instead of through the mail. And there are several other features that we can begin to roll out down the road once everyone gets comfortable with the basics. So, yeah, does anybody have any questions?
I was just trying to get some clarification on that. If, if people were going to get notifications about everything going on everywhere, that that can be a lot on your, on your phone and your notification. So, but I understand that you, when you sign up, you can filter preferences of I only want this, this, and this to be notified, security alerts, rather to be notified, security alerts, rather than every maybe football game or every, you know, whatever is going on.
Yes.
Um, so I I appreciate that this system is going to take care of that.
Yes, yeah, people can definitely uh sounds like buzzing. Uh, people can choose what they, when and how they want to receive notifications, emergency alerts and whatnot will will override people's preferences because we want those to get through. But for things like that, um, school-wide or district-wide, you can choose to receive via text or email. You can choose to receive things instantly or all at once at six P M at night. There's a lot of flexibility. Any other questions?
Uh, I had a question. Well, first of all, in reviewing this, I I'd be particularly interested in signing up for it because it's information we could use also. But I was a- and if you can select, I thought this, could this be used for, for instance, scholarship opportunities, uh, budget information, uh, and school activities? And people could select those kinds of things that they would be interested in?
There's a lot of flexibility in creating different groups that people can like sign up for for different types of information. For instance, we also used it to replace Peachjar uh for e-fliers. And now instead of um people getting emails constantly from Peachjar for different community flyers or school information, people can opt in to this e-flier group if they want to receive that information. So we can use it in a variety of ways.
Well, just one of the thing, I think for juniors and seniors especially, scholarship opportunities and deadlines. There are so many deadlines that can be missed.
And there is a student square piece of this also that um I believe the high school is already starting to experiment with a little bit, and we can uh connect um, connect with
My experiences, the parents often have to be a little bit
Yeah.
up bushy behind meeting those deadlines.
Yeah, that's a great
And need to know about them also.
Yes, and I'm working on getting you all looped in also, so stay tuned.
So it does have a broad applicability in that. It it sounds like a really good tool.
Yeah, it's fun.
I didn't hear. What'd you say you're working on what?
Getting the board members looped in. Mm-hmm.
Oh. I'm looking at. There's a ton. He, of course, he has all the schools on here. How many posts? Like, this is hundreds. So
Yeah.
Okay.
And I'll be rolling out guidance as well about, you know, a good schedule for posting. Yeah. Okay. And also in your packet, you have some refreshed designs for our strategic plan posters. And I believe you have an action item on that as well.
Yeah, that's page thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six.
So what I'm looking for is
I can motion if you want. Uh, motion to re-adopt the district and board's strategic plan as presented.
We have a motion, a, okay, we have a motion and second discussion. So did everybody?
I've been familiar generally with the strategic plan, but I think it can we be, can there be a brief explanation of what's new or what's different or what's changed?
It's the same content. It's uh just a refresh kind of design with um just a more variety, wider variety of students.
Is there text amendments?
No.
Okay.
It's one of those things that we talked about that. Uh, you can only have once a poster or something has been up for doesn't take very long, people stop, stop looking at them. And it's like, you know, McDonald's restaurants. I can speak about that. Forty-six years working for McDonald's for they're always changing, always changing their advertising, their pictures, and it's just because people change. And so um, I really like the update personally. I really like um the updated colors and the kids and the staff that's in it. So uh, when will this, if we will vote, when will this be updated out into the buildings?
I'll be able to get them uh printed as soon as you guys approve them. We'll put it in order.
Okay.
Yeah, it's like just hop on the compliment train. Uh, I've only been on the board about a year now. But it was the the strategic plan imagery uh started to get dull on the eyes. So I, you know, the the color pop, more kids. Um, just the formatting changes I think are are good, attractive to the eye. So that's all we got.
There are questions? Okay.
Um, I also wanted to uh compliment you that the the four uh principals on the outside of the, we put them on the outside of the strategic plan, but those really are more highlighted and more more um I think those are the driving things that make the bullseye work. And so um, I I did appreciate that. Um, I was just wondering if if any color change, if you considered any uh background being different or um just wondered if if we wanted to really have it be different looking than it than our last one that we've put in the classrooms.
Yeah, these ones, so these are the uh different versions of the ones behind you that are have the black background, and then these ones that you're looking at now have the brighter um cleaner background. So that's the, those are the, that's the difference. And they kind of match the the ones that we put in schools a little more too.
Further questions? Okay, let's call for the vote. All in favor? But, yeah, we got a yes for me. Okay. Chelsea, you did fabulous. That's why you're the communication specialist, right? Media person. Okay. Um, now we're gonna move in and ask Phoenix to come up and give their report.
Good evening. Is that better? Uh, my name is Lori Newton. I am the interim executive director of Phoenix Charter School for the near future. I have with me Cory Bernard, our new principal. Also for our admin team is Marie Leary. She is our dean of students. And Hope Austin, who is our director of operations, um, wanted to bring more of our team to you as well as uh having them more of a partner, more of a team to present to you. So uh, next slide, please. I remember last spring, both with you guys and with the board that serves the charter school. I used to be a member of that board and have watched the progress of Phoenix very carefully. Both these boards recognized last spring that student performance data needs to improve significantly. And so uh, next slide. We got direction from the charter board as well as you guys. Um, and and I do want to say that since then, since June, I stepped in to volunteer my time and services as executive director. My experience was thirty-six years in education. The nine last years of that were as superintendent out in Days Creek. So I had a skill set for school administration, both fiscal and and, you know, evaluating teachers, all of the little pieces of school administration. So I did that as a volunteer for the entire summer. And the board did ask me to stay on, to move into um, your your superintendent also asked me to stay on to start the school year. So I resigned from both boards to get compensation for that. Otherwise, it'd be a conflict of interest. So now I'm speaking to you as the interim director. Most of you have known me before as a board member. So we want to increase student achievement in math and English on those state test scores, increase our four-year graduation rate, increase attendance, increase um a test participation because we had so many families opt out. We're going to encourage that um that they take those tests, conduct a financial deep dive, which we have done. And I am pleased to say we know where we are right now. And um, some things were kind of slipping off the plate. We weren't sure where we were with some grants. And now we know where we are. And with the partnership with Roseford um, and their participation in in funding us, um, we are in very good financial state. Thank you. Thank you, Roseford. Um, and provide expert grant management. We actually have hired a grant manager that's just brilliant, and she's made sure that we are on top of all our grants. And to build a cooperative and open relationship with Roseford, we're already decided to participate in all the leadership activities and some of the staff development activities and be a part of the Roseford School District. So uh, we're excited to do that. Next slide. So I'm gonna turn it over to Cory for the data, and then I'll be back in a few more slides.
So the, I've got our attendance data. This was from the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year off that school report card. We have twenty-one percent of students who attend more than ninety percent of the enrolled school days. That was a four percent increase from the previous year. We are gonna be working towards reaching out to families. I have our teachers. I'm on top of them to do their attendance accurately. We are checking their attendance regularly, ensuring that we've got accurate reports. And then we're gonna be um shortly start making calls to families to encourage students to come. And then we do have services to offer if there are barriers for transportation, since we have a lot of students that are out of district. So we are gonna be reaching out and trying to increase our attendance. Next slide. Our on-track for graduation data, um, I'll be honest, like, I don't feel comfortable prevent presenting data that I don't know for a fact is accurate. So what I did is I actually went through and reviewed all a hundred and eighty students transcripts and credits with Lori's help to ensure that we have students on track for graduation. I then pulled the data from Synergy and went through and actually looked at every single student in tenth, eleventh, and twelfth grade. So for our students, our current tenth graders, we are at thirty-six point four percent on track for graduation. That's only fourteen out of thirty-eight students. Our eleventh graders were at twenty-five point forty-five percent on track for graduation, which is only fourteen out of fifty-five students. And our twelfth graders are at twenty-eight point eighty-five percent on track for graduation, which is fifteen out of fifty-two students. So we understand that our data is not great. Uh, we have a lot of things in place that we are working to improve that data. As for the data that was provided for the school report card, I'm not sure where that data came from, and I couldn't validate it. So I decided that I needed to make sure I was prevent presenting data that I knew for a fact was accurate. Um, next slide. There we go. Our assessment data, this came from the O S A S website. So I've got our data for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year for science. Um, it's a little small, but you can see that we're trying to get level threes and fours. Those are ones that meet graduation requirements. So our eleventh graders, we had thirty-one percent in science. The state average for eleventh graders was thirty-one percent. So we were doing pretty good in the science with them meeting. Next slide. Our E L A, we had twenty-seven percent at a level three and eighteen percent at eleven um, at a level four. So we had forty-five percent that were meeting on E L A in eleventh grade. The state average is forty-eight percent. So we felt pretty good about that. We're getting really close to that state average. Next slide. Math. Not so great. Um, I am a math teacher. I am a math professor at the college. Um, this one I'm very passionate about, and it's a little heartbreaking for me. We have nobody who has met in eleventh grade last year for level three and level four. The state average is twenty-one percent. Because of this, I have adopted curriculum for my math teachers. I am requiring them to use some state adopted Common Core curriculum that has been proven to be very good, aligned with standards. Sutherland School District uses it. It's the big ideas math. I have it for my eighth grade instructor. I have it for my math instructor for Integrated One, Integrated Two, and Integrated Three. We are also, I'm having them use um the financial algebra that Roseford High uses for our consumer math. So I am really focused on making sure that we are buffing up our math and making sure that I'm holding those teachers accountable because we need to have some students that are meeting, and this data doesn't make me very happy. So with that, I'm hoping that this year we can actually show some growth because we've got some good common um, Common Core State Standard curriculum. And in the past, they haven't had any curriculum like that. They've kind of just been piecing things together. Do you guys have any questions on the data? Okay, Lori?
I'm also a former math teacher. So um, we've got support from both the top administrators and kicking the math better. So um, moving forward, we are instituting a lot of, a lot more structure and emphasis on academics. So aligning curriculum and state standards, increased course offerings, increase the teaching staff, building C T and STEAM programs. Um, in in fact, some of the courses that we are offering now include trades in construction and welding and, you know, those kinds of really employable skills. Um, expand our youth core, our youth core programs, our employment programs. And we have a number of students who are being paid in workforce through grants from Forest Service, B L M, uh, farm to school, who are working for wages and earning credits at the same time and learning employment skills. Um, and also finding them jobs and that opportunity youth that are no longer in school from ages sixteen to twenty-four. Um, we are capturing them in our work programs as well. In fact, the work program's part of Phoenix. I'm not sure we've done a very good job of sharing that with all of you. Um, but it's very robust and growing, and we get a lot of support from federal agencies on that. Um, increased mental health services, we've expanded to a full-time counselor for kids. Um, we align the Ro- Roseford policies for staff and students because we are a Roseford school. We will follow your policies for all of the instruction-related uh employee-related things. Um, more efficient grant management, I mentioned that before, and building a stronger partnership with you all. Um, like I said, we have now committed to those leadership opportunities that uh Superintendent Horton offers. Uh, next slide. Oh, that's it. Um, any, any questions? I I I do want to assure you that we intend to be behind our word and our numbers, that what you see from us will be what is happening at Phoenix.
Questions? So I've heard tonight, unless I'm not hearing well, that uh, you had a hard time understanding the numbers or the numbers come from the data?
No, um.
What did I?
I don't have a hard time understanding the numbers. I could not find the data to back the prior numbers.
Let me ask the correct question to then. So these past few years, um, how can this board be confident that the numbers that would be, were being presented to us were accurate?
I have no problem showing you all of the data that I have that I got them from. I actually have which, you know, privacy-wise, but I'd be happy to show. I have a list of all my current students in tenth, eleventh, and twelfth with their credits attempted printed directly.
Let me ask the question again.
Sorry.
How can this board be confident of the numbers that have been given to us over the past few years that they are accurate?
I, we can't.
You can't. Okay.
No.
So
We can be confident from now on.
They, no, public participation's over.
We can be confident from
What, what I, what I wanna, there's a statement that you put in here that has offended most of the board. And it's not accurate. This is what is not accurate. And it's not accurate. This is what is not accurate. Both Phoenix Charter School and the Roseburg School Boards recognized last spring that student performance data needed to improve significantly at Phoenix. We've been talking about this for years.
Oh, yes.
For years.
Yes.
I would like the strut out of this uh, presentation that you gave us.
In fact, would it be better if I added that this board has been concerned for many years?
We have been and, and you have just kind of, the presentation has just kind of confirmed that. I'm nerve, I'm, the, the numbers, you, you know, nobody can be, I mean, can come to us and tell us, no, these numbers are accurate. You know, I've just heard it tonight that you don't know.
That is true.
And so for years, we have been working. Uh, see, this, this is the issue. This board's very involved.
Yes.
You made a comment about you approved or you have new math curriculum. And I, and I understood that you picked it out. So where was, was the board involved in it? Or did, see, I mean, there's a missing link. I don't think your board understands what is going on. And I know there's change and things, hopefully things will happen. I don't doubt that, but you can't be sending stuff like this and putting this on the spot where, you know, we've been, we've been, we've been talking about this for years.
You have.
And I don't see any improvement, so to speak. And then you come in tonight and you're not comfortable with the numbers that have been presented to us on it. So I just, it's just like it's been smoke and mirrors the past, past few years. So anyway, just my comment. Any other, any other comments from the board? Okay.
Can I say something real quick?
Real quick.
Um, I totally understand where you're coming from. I wasn't here prior. I was only here since um, April of last year. What I can say is that I can stand behind the data that I am presenting and I will be 100% transparent. I would be happy to show you guys anything you need. I do understand that there has been issues in the past and you guys don't trust the data and I want to rebuild that. I am working with Michelle. I am trying to work with Dr. Weber. I will present anything that you guys need to back it to prove that what I am presenting is accurate and I stand by that. Um, I can't speak for anything before that, but I do want to say that I am comfortable with the data I presented and I have everything if you would like to see it to justify my numbers. And I know they're not great, but I feel that it's better to be able to say like, I know for a fact that these are accurate based off of the data we have and I can stand behind that. Um, I would rather.
And I appreciate that. I get that, but you know, I've been on the board 31 years and I'm telling you, this has been going on and then when I read something like this, I'm thinking, no, that's not right. We've been, we've been through this for years. And, and it, it needs to get fixed. Jared, did you have?
What we're trying to do.
Okay, so thank you. To adoption of the 2025-26 annual school calendar, Michelle?
Thank you. Um, on Wednesday, September 4th, the district calendar committee met. Um, it consisted of the superintendent, myself, um, our director of teacher and, and learning, our union leadership. We also had building principals there, um, coordinators and our communications coordinator. We met to review two versions of the proposed school district calendar, one that started in um, Board Vice Chair Cotton was there with us as well. Um, he attended as the representative of the board and also as a member of the A and P committee. Um, two versions were presented, one that started school prior to Labor Day and one that started school post Labor Day. Um, and lots of discussion took place um, regarding both calendars. And um, the committee is proposing to accept um, the post-Labor Day holiday calendar or post, yes, post-Labor Day holiday version of the calendar for the 25-26 school year.
And a second?
I motionally accept the post-Labor Day calendar.
And I second the motion.
Discussion? Yeah, I would say this is probably the earliest that we've got the calendar. Uh, so parents can start planning vacations and I know it's a, it's always out, but uh, uh, that's good. And now just a caution. In a couple of years, I think, September, the Labor Day is going to be like seventh or eighth. So this could revert back to starting before, well, probably will starting before Labor Day. So uh, it's just kind of way weird how the calendar works. But anyway, I want to thank Michelle and the, the commi- all the folks that worked on this. To get to where we're at today. So I'm going to call for the vote, vote all in favor. Oh, okay.
I just say something real quick. Um, I'm a big fan of the post-Labor Day. I mean, just because it's just, it seems easier on the parents to in mentally be like Labor Day, school starts. But also, I mean, the, the safety concerns with the, you know, the wildfire stuff, the smoke, the lately, it's been, you know, starting early, what was it a little over a year ago? We had, it was, it was just, oh yeah, last year was just a nightmare, uh, dealing with the smoke issues. So, um, good job.
Okay, let's call for the vote all in favor. Okay, unanimous. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move into reports and a director's report and tonight, Michelle, you got to talk to us about some fantastic numbers and interesting numbers on our staffing.
All right. I turned it on. Thank you for the reminder. Just trying to share my screen. All right. Yes, I got selected to go first this year with the HR report. Um, so I have a back-to-school staffing update um, for the board for the 24-25 school year. Um, just wanted to start as we always do with our strategic plan. Um, making sure that we are providing the care, care, support and instruction for our staff as well as our students. Um, we really want to highlight the support piece tonight. Um, we are going to start with where we are with our total employees in the district. We have 783 employees, 362 classified employees. Currently, we are 98% of those positions are filled. We do have eight vacancies, but we are working hard to get those filled. And we have 35 administrators in our district. Um, 97% of those positions are filled because we have one vacancy. Um, that is our Student Services Department Coordinator. That vacancy came about late in August. Um, when Lisa Dickover left to go to Winston-Dillard to be a principal. So that opened that up. And we have been in the process of trying to find a coordinator. It's much more difficult this time of the year to find an administrator. So we're making adjustments to support student services in the interim. We have 378 licensed teachers. 99.7% of those positions are filled. Um, we have one vacancy that does not have a long-term sub or anyone in that position, and that is our home instruction teacher. And that position provides support for um, homebound students that need additional assistance. And we're actively filling that position. It was filled, but that person moved into the behavior um, support specialist position for student services. So we moved that position over. Um, we do have two classrooms in the district that have long-term substitutes in them. So we are still actively looking to fill those positions, but they do have teachers in there and the students are receiving instruction. And we have eight confidential employees and all of those positions are currently filled. Um, just to give you some information about our new and returning employees. So we have 36 new or returning in teachers. So they may have been teachers for us in the past and they've come back. And we also have our new hires. 11 of those 36 are brand new to teaching. 25 of them have teaching experience that they are bringing to the district. In addition, we have hired four former instructional assistants for the district who have now moved into teaching positions this year. So really working on the grow your own. And those are, three of those are special education positions, which are hardest to fill positions. So supporting our classified staff to move into teaching positions. Exciting to watch that growth and it, with the difficulty in filling special education positions, it's really putting it on districts that you need to find it within um, and, and grow those people to support our students. And we have 37 new or returning classified employees um, this school year. But I also wanted to highlight, I know you have seen this um, document before, but really highlight the ongoing professional learning. That's really the key to success of our employees. Um, in addition to all of this training that took place before school started, um, our Teaching and Learning Department has ongoing training that I know Dr. Weber will share continuously throughout the year. But we do have two district mentors that are providing support for our first and second year teachers. This year, we have two district literacy specialists, which are able to go in and provide professional learning and support for our teachers and our principals. And we have our wonderful teaching and learning coordinators that are, that have been meeting with our principals and they also are going in to provide support for principals and teachers. Student Services has their behavior support TOSSAs. They also have their um, SPED TOSSAs that supports special education classrooms and teachers. And just ongoing professional learning that continues to move um, forward throughout the year. Really focusing on that support piece and that care, support and instruction for our staff. And we, we really anticipate that um, the years of experience for our new employees coming in will continue to increase due to the strong contracts that we have in place to support our staff.
Any questions? Uh, questions? Um, you know, because of the recent school shootings and all that, do we have special lockdown training that we give teachers?
Yes.
Okay, is that, would that be a part of this or is that?
Yes, we have the I love you guys training that was provided and with um, Mr. Ekinbusch coming off with, on with us as our new safety coordinator, we will continue with that training for our teachers and all of our staff.
Did that, uh, did that training, did that start at the beginning of the year? Was it, you know, done school by school or how, how was that training done?
So our administrators provide training for their staff in our back-to-school trainings with them, and then it does take place throughout the year as well. And every month, um, our schools pack, practice their drills, one, depending on what the drill schedule is. Um, and so, and I know that the request has been for the drill schedules to be turned in to Mr. Ekinbusch um, whenever he comes on with us. So that is something that we practice monthly in our schools.
Okay, thank you.
So last year, last year, I got to participate in the drill at the high school. I see some of the guys out. In fact, you, you got to babysit me, which was important. Um, it's amazing and I would encourage uh, because there's some work that has to be done. They, you know, Jared asked, I would encourage if you want to go watch a lockdown and I, I want to do another one, maybe elementary if possible. Um, let Jared know and he'll do his best to get you to one of those drills. I mean, it's live. I mean, it's live for us. It's, it's um, it's very beneficial. So you really understand what the staff and the kids are going through. I mean, it's, it's just like, I mean, at the end of it, you just want to sit down and cry because we're having to put our staff and our kids through this, but it's, we have to. And hopefully with all the new security that we have and we're, we're doing a good, but I would highly recommend as a board member being able to go and, and watch one of those lockdowns. It's pretty, it's interesting. Okay, any other questions for Michelle? It, you got off easy. Superintendent's report.
All right. Thank you very much. I will say, just want to give a shout out to, you know, we've got, we have great people working in this district everywhere. Um, we could talk about the amazing things all of our staff do each day. Special shout out um, to all of our staff. And I was thinking about our cabinet group, um, hyper-focused on our kids. Wanted to take a minute to thank Michelle for that report. Michelle's done a really remarkable job as our, both our assistant superintendent and our HR director. She's provided stability and consistency and professionalism. Um, and um, in, in alignment and that's uh, been great. So appreciate that report tonight. Michelle, so I've got a short report for you tonight. Of course, I always say that, probably longer than you want, but this is actually pretty short tonight. So I wanted to start by saying this, I am so proud to live in this country. I am thankful for our freedoms. I'm proud to be an American. Um, I'm grateful for our first responders and our military, all those who keep our freedoms alive. I'm also incredibly grateful for our staff who at times act as our first responders for our kids. And oftentimes are our first responders for kids in event of emergency. So, so thank you. It's not just academics that um, we respond to, we respond to that sometimes first. Uh, but also as we think about our country and our freedoms and all the investments we're making around security and keeping our most precious assets safe, which are our kids. Can't go without talking about our staff who oftentimes are the first ones there, hunkering down in front of a door. And so thank you. Um, talk about, a little bit about the start of the year. We've had a really great start of the year. Um, been able to get out to our schools and visit with many of our staff. It did not feel like the first week of school, the first week of school. Um, just want to say thanks to our staff, our administrators in particular, who really focused on setting routines. Instruction was happening the first day of school. And, you know, I was at a couple, I was at many schools, but I was thinking specifically about a couple of elementary schools where we've got, I mean, these are our babies, right? They're, these are young kids and it's new, everything's new. And I watching, you know, kindergartners and first graders and I was in a first grade classroom. Uh, in fact, one of the, in fact, was it on this one? Uh, it was on one of the ones, Michelle. Um, but there we've got, you know, one of our first grade teachers uh, giving the kids jitter juice. It was like Kool-Aid, you know? And was like, get the jitters out, you know, and here we are, instruction the first day. It's really been a great, great start. Sometimes we think about the start of the school year just being academics and kids are getting their sea legs back and we're all kind of getting back in the routine. But I also just want to say this, kids and staff are involved in athletics, clubs, extracurricular activities. And if you've got kids to this age, they're, they're busy and they've, they've done a great job. Um, it was fun to be at some sporting events, see the lights. Thank you board for those beautiful lights at Finley Field. Um, we're keeping a track on, keeping track of enrollment, kind of seeing where we're at and monitoring class sizes. Um, but we had a really, really good start of the year. So I wanted to let you know that. Um, we've talked about this before, um, but I just want to mention there to me is a relatively simple but profound equation as we think about improvement. And that is that you have to increase access for students. There really isn't an achievement gap. It's much more of an access gap. So we think about achievement gaps across the country and across the world. What often happens is actually an access gap. Do kids have access to the right things to help them be successful? All students can be successful. It's what we believe in. It's our mantra here. We believe if kids can get the care and support instruction they need, they will graduate. So the, the equation for me is pretty simple. If kids can have more access and they can have more opportunities, they can have some more choice in what they're doing and we increase rigor, then students will be successful. Students today, more maybe than any other time, there's a lot of options for them. And what, what we know is this, if they don't work hard and it's not rigorous, they don't value it. And I, we are increasing rigor in our schools. Part of our success moving, what we've seen and what we've seen is the beginning is going to be the combination of these things. So I'll just mention a couple. It's cool on the, on the opportunity and access side, we've got free access to, to extracurricular and sporting events. We've got increased opportunities for AP courses and college credits and career pathway. We've got increased tools. Um, uh, Chelsea talked tonight about one of the tools, for example, Parent Score that gives us an an increased way to involve parents in, in the process of education, we partner together with them. And we're seeing upward momentum. So I hope we can continue to think about that. How do we increase access and opportunities for kids? We, we're unrelenting about that. And we increase the rigor of the opportunities kids have. Is I think about kids have being on the pathway to graduation and also graduating, the only value a graduation diploma has is if it's rigorous. The things in life that we value, we've worked for. And so I really appreciate the focus of this staff on not taking the easy route. It's not about compliance. It's about making sure kids have a really, really relevant and rigorous experience. And that is another one of our focuses this year. I want to talk just for a minute about, um, the heat. It was hot last week and I want to just let the board know kind of the process we go, um, through. First of all, thank you to anybody listening that was in our classrooms and our schools. There, it was hot. And, um, in some ways, the heat we experienced challenges directly our strategic plan. I want to be honest about this. We say kids are going to have the care and support they need and instruction they need. We say that staff's going to have the care and support they need. When it gets this hot in our classrooms, it's almost impossible to give them the care they need in these hot, hot days. It's hard to support them. And we've got a plan for it. I'll talk about that in a minute. And also I'll just say this, when kids are melting, instruction's melting. It's really hard to go to the second grade and be like, come on, we're going to get some math work done while they're literally just melting in front of you. We have to think about how to have a long-term investment that lets us do what we said we will do with the strategic plan. We said kids are going to have this, staff's going to have that. So I want to talk just for a minute about what we do. Every morning, Michelle's been sending an update on the heat index. We work off a common note, it's called the NOSHA app that comes from OSHA. Um, let me back up one, 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 a few minutes, a few steps here. A few years ago, I think it's been three years ago, OSHA came out with some rules about heat illness prevention. We didn't have these in the past. And that, this is, the OSHA is focused on the adults, the workers are not focused on the kids. They don't really care about the kids. If you work for OSHA, you might care about kids, but OSHA doesn't care about kids in this context. What we did is they came out with some guidance that when it gets a certain, when the heat index gets to a certain level, certain things need to happen. And so we have our heat illness prevention operational guidelines on the website. Michelle sends out a message about that. Um, last year, if you remember, we had both heat and smoke and we had to cancel. We had did a half day because of the heat and the smoke. We give daily updates to our administrators. We include the association members as well about the plan for the day. We monitor hourly the heat index. And then there's, there's depending on the, what OSHA calls the, the light work or moderate work, there's certain indicators of what we need to do. So we're sending those things out. So we're complying with that, but I just think it's also important to realize that when it gets hot enough, we can't comply with that. So when it gets to a certain temperature and I've been really grateful this week that the smoke's been pretty good and the heat seems to have dissipated at least for the ten day forecast. So if you're hearing about air quality and heat, I just would say this as a board. We're, we're advising and reminding staff what the plan is. We want to make sure that they are cared for. Um, oftentimes it's hotter than staff want. And that's where as a board, we need to come up as a group, come up with a long-term plan for that. Um, I am grateful that we're doing what we can to try to find grant funding for this. Thanks to Cheryl, others who have worked on this, Tracy and others, we did qualify for some grant fundings, federal fundings. That comes with just a couple of hoops to jump through. Um, but Eastwood and Jolaine qualified for the Renew America grant. So operation, uh, heat wave is hopefully over for the year. Uh, the beginning of, of the year and we hope to see cooler temperatures, but in the event of heat, we'll still have to kind of think that through and again, think that in terms of the scrap plan as well. Last slide's this. When Henry Ford was, um, building his business and thinking differently about the production of automobiles, he said this, and I've always loved this quote, that coming together is the beginning. And keeping together, that's progress. But working together is what success is. And I just want to say this in closing, I am thankful and grateful for not just coming together. The board is not just coming together, they're not just keeping together, but thank you for working together with each other, with the school district, with our staff. It is making a difference. It was neat to hear Russ today and you'll hear this from, from all of our schools. We had some upward momentum in every school last year. It's exciting. But it's the beginning. We're going to continue to come together, to stay together, but most importantly, to work together. And so thank, I just want to thank the board for leaning into this work. I appreciate your involvement. And, um, thank you for the opportunity to give this report tonight.
Thank you, Jared. Uh, individual reports and I'll start with you.
Um, just as the, as the chair of the curriculum and instruction, we're, we're meeting and with Jill and going to be setting up the, a schedule on meeting regularly as a subcommittee. So, um, look forward to that and, um, we'll be, um, we'll be getting some new curriculum that we need to take a look at and make sure that the public also is aware of any new purchase in that way. Thank you.
Andrew, Mr. Mrs. Minor, you have anything you'd like to add? Are you in the red caboose right now? Okay. Good story. Really, it's a, it's a, uh,
The hotel.
It's a hotel. It's got a bunch of red caboose's set around and that's where they're vacationing there. So I'm looking forward to going there someday. I think that'll be fun. Uh, Andrew?
Uh, just like Sam, happy that school is back in session, get the kids back out of the house and onto the bus every morning. I'm thankful for all the teachers and principals and administrators that make all this possible and, um, educate our children. Thank you.
Michael? Okay. For Hammerson?
Yeah, I have nothing to add as well.
Yes, Mr. Cubey?
I have a couple of really quick, uh, reports. Uh, first one was, uh, missing some of the logistics of how you should do this. I took Director Leoni and myself out to Melrose on the twentieth of August. And we did our tour, met with the principal, talked to the custodian, saw the new playground, festival, septic system going in. Um, and, uh, and identified saw how these wonderful new gym tables work uh, in that school and how they were lucky to have as part of their retrofitting, heating and cooling that went into that gym. Uh, noted how clean the campus was, just, just really in good condition. Uh, and, uh, and then we also did hear a note that that is a school that might like to try to get some additional cameras. Just as a note. And, um, and we had a really good visit, uh, with the principal. The second one I have is today, um, I went out, um, my door, walked a few feet and watched the release process for Fullerton Four. And it was efficient, safe and secure. And I went to the release point here on Broccoli Street. And while I was there, I visited with about eight or so parents and they said, how's it going so far? To every one of them. And they said, it's a wonderful year so far. It's great. Not a negative statement at all. And that was really nice. Lots of parents come there to pick up their kids. They were really positive. Um, and I wanted to compliment the system on this release process. It was safety focused. They never released a single child without unauthorized adult, proper adult picking them up. They coordinated with, by walkie talkie with the two or three other release points that we have. And I did observe a little girl who was waiting and waiting and waiting in the last one. And the, her ride went to the wrong gate. And through the walkie talkie system, they escorted her over, escorted her over and made sure she got with the right people and got home. Uh, it, it really worked well. Compliments to the system because of the way that's set up.
Um, talking about busing. So for the first few days of the bus that comes by my house, a few minutes before nine, I can't. You know, when you're retired, it doesn't matter to ten minutes or whatever, but I kept telling my wife, there's, and I think I mentioned to you, we were talking, I said, there's nobody on that bus. And so this morning, I said, there's nobody on the bus. And she says, yes, there is. She says, they're so small. The only thing you see is their little heads, their tops of their head. She says, there's lots of little kids on that bus. So that's kind of fun. Since her last meeting, I did want, um, to, to talk about the tour that we took. It was a work session for the, this was our last meeting a couple of weeks ago. We had a bite dinner and then we all, well, most of you got it, were able to get in the van carefully. It's a little rough for me, but got in the van and we went to all of our properties that the district owns. And so the board could see, um, and kind of the history, um, of why, why it was bought. I'm still trying to find, figure out the $10 property that we got for $10, but we'll figure that out. But I think it's important for the community to know that, um, we are paying attention to the land that we own and what that holds. And especially with what could go on at Charter Oaks. And, uh, the growth that we, hopefully someday we will have. So that was a good, that was a good, um, that was a good work session. Um, I think so. I hope you all enjoyed doing that. I wanted once again to compliment the band members that were here. If you really want to see one of the state's finest marching bands, you should go to a football game. And they play Friday night at home. And they put on, uh, uh, this, they continued to add to their program. So there, we'll see two or three probably, songs and marching. They are so, they are superb, superb. And so you should go to a football game and watch, watch this man. It's a hundred and, it's a hun- uh, hundred and thirty band members. I can remember Keith was with, was on the words sometime. We were very close to losing that program. And, um, we said, uh-uh. So Karen G went out and got, got a young music teacher. And look what he's done with this support. It's, it's fabulous. So, uh, think about going. So, um, okay, our next meeting will be, uh, work session on the twenty fifth of September. It'll be at censor, central office. Having said that, meeting is adjourned.